Okay, everybody in place except Marcus. Right on one of the floor deals. Two of them. Right between them.
Oh, no.
What placement? Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the August 18th meeting of the City Redistricting Commission. Brenda, would you like to call, roll call?
Absolutely. First, we have Commissioners Porter.
Present.
Petterzani.
Present.
Leslie Canty.
Present.
Nave.
Present.
Clark. Arnett.
Present.
Wagman.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
And Huffer.
Here.
We have eight present.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? Okay, then, if everybody's had a chance to look, I'm looking for a motion to approve or adjust as necessary.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Bill. If everyone's in favor of passing the minutes, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? If that passes. Okay, our next item, we'd go to Mr. Vogt. Would you like to introduce us to any of the maps or any of the changes we've had?
Well, we haven't made any changes to the maps, but they're still what they are.
Okay, and would you explain so the people that are here know which maps we have on the wall?
Yes, so the one on the far left is our current boundaries, and it includes the NIA boundaries on top of that is the red shaded area.
Okay.
The next one to the right is Plan A. It has five changes with five precincts changing. The one to the right of that would be Plan B. There is eight precincts that change in that one. And then the one to the far right is Plan C, and there are 50 precincts that change.
Okay. Does anyone in the commission have any questions about any of the maps as they stand right John, Teresa, are you okay with that? Okay. Okay, if there's no questions about that, then let's move on to the public hearing. I am going to ask everyone, because I forgot last week, if you have a cellphone, turn it to mute, so we don't have any distractions while we're doing this. I have a list here of people who like to talk, and I have one that's on the Zoom line, and I'd like to get Ms. Friedman started while she's on there. So if you're ready, go ahead, Rhiannon.
Wonderful, thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Rhiannon Friedman, and I'm the President of Downtown Topeka, Inc. So I wanted to start off by thanking each of you for taking the time to go through this process. You know, this is not something that is light or an easy lift or an easy task, so I appreciate everybody's time and commitment to this. So as the President of Downtown Topeka, Inc., it's my duty to make sure that downtown businesses and the Downtown Topeka Board is aware of any type of changes or things like this that might be going through city council or any city governing process. So in doing such, I reached out and talked with the Downtown Topeka, Inc. board and presented them with the maps and...
Did we lose her? There she is.
Anyways, after, so after sharing these maps with the Downtown Topeka, Inc. board, it is our opinion that we're, DTI is really not in support of any type of changes that would take the true business improvement district of Downtown Topeka and break that into two separate council districts. I think that having one representative that oversees the district of Downtown Topeka is extremely important, that we have a unified voice and a unified front. Also, reached out to some of our neighbors in the Noto District and talking with their executive director as well, and talking about the importance of Noto and Downtown Topeka each having an individual voice and an individual council person to represent them adds a lot of value and true importance. So just wanted to make sure that we were able to put that messaging out there, and you know, once again, I greatly appreciate, understand that this is not a light lift or an easy task, so appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and yeah, thank you all for your time.
Does, do any of the Commissioners have any questions for Rhiannon? Go ahead, Jeff.
So thank you very much for being here this evening or this afternoon. We appreciate it. Did your board talk about the potential advantage of having perhaps two city council persons advocating for downtown at all? Is there, rhetorically, is there any advantage to that?
Sure. I'm not going to say that there could, there might not be an advantage to that. I think that Councilwoman Hiller has represented District One in downtown for several years, and you know, she knows this area like the back of her hand, is extremely passionate about it, and not to say that somebody else wouldn't be as well. This has just worked really well for us in the past, and I think our unified voice and passion for downtown has always served downtown in the best way possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Vicki.
Thank you for being here. I wanted to ask, can you tell us what voting precincts are in the downtown area, considering the, because our task is, of course, to consider the census resident population. So what, what voting precincts are in downtown?
Yeah, so I'll be completely candid and honest and say that I will not be able to answer that question, but could definitely give that answer to you.
Thank you.
Tom, is that something you can answer?
I can't answer at this time.
I do know that 2/11 is downtown. Beyond that, I don't know how much of it stretches.
Since you're looking at it, can you tell me what that population is in that precinct?
1,115. Okay, are there any other questions? Thank you, Rhiannon.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I'm going to move on to the public comments, and I believe you've been informed, but I just want to make sure you have four minutes to speak, and if you have more to say, you can request an additional two minutes. I think that's all I needed. I've got a listener name, so it doesn't matter to me if you're ready to come up and speak. Yes, sir.
Can you turn the volume up? We can't hear you back here.
Okay, we'll get that done.
Thank you.
Is any, whoever's ready to start, go ahead and come on up to the microphone, state your name, and...
I'm nervous, so I'll get it over first. Good afternoon, my name is Connie Hood, and I live in the 300 block of Northwest Fairchild, which is two and a half blocks from Noto Arts and Entertainment District. I'm here to ask that Plan A of the proposed redistricting maps be the one that you recommend to the governing body. So I've done a little speaking to my neighbors and friends that I have in Oakland, including my daughter, and we are confused as to why part of the downtown area, that Ward 2, Precinct 11, I believe it is, would be added to our District 2 and not Ward 2, Precinct 4 area of Oakland, which would unify the Northeast Sewered Corridor, which is historically already a part of the Oakland area. If instead we were to take the downtown area, Ward 2, Precinct 11, as proposed in map Plan B, our fear is that funding could and probably would be funneled into the downtown area and away from the many residents in our district. And as we know, funding is very limited and it's highly competitive, and big fear is, would that put at risk our Noto Arts and Entertainment area, which we're so grateful for and is a real boon to our district, both the Oakland side and the North Topeka East side? Well, North Topeka East and Oakland share a lot of similar issues and struggles, like squatters, abandoned homes, and boarded up houses. And while I may not understand all the factors that figure into funding and why North Topeka East and Oakland struggle to receive, you know, the attention to improving the quality of life there in our district, which Noto really helps. And I do believe that we have more, a higher number of residents than the downtown area of Ward 2, Precinct 11. I think that was in the 2020 census, but don't ask me how many, because now I'm like very nervous. But here's what I do know, that our city is only as strong as our weakest link. And so I ask you to help make our city stronger by unifying that Northeast Sewered Corridor and add the residents, the people, the folks that live there, into our District 2, and recommend map Plan A. And I want to just thank you for your time and your attention and your hard work. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Teen and, thank you.
Thank you.
Who would like to speak next?
Tom Hedges, Oakland resident. We have been, we was, our district was changed, we don't know why, a few years ago where they split. I was on the half of Forest that went and Garden Park that went to the other district. We would like the Plan A adopted, because it would be less intrusive, it would only, there would only be five changes in the, in the voting districts, and I think that would be the simplest. And I noticed that all of them unify Oakland again, which is, I think, is Oakland and North Topeka being, you know, together instead of splitting us is what, what we really want. So, thank you.
Any questions for Tom? Teen and, thank you. Come on up.
Yes, my name's Kenneth Jessup. I live in the Garden Park area. I've lived in Oakland going on the, in November, 78 years. I've lived in the Garden Park area over 50 years. And why they changed this a few years back to take and put us over into the East Topeka district has no common sense at all. We feel like, along with Tom, we're an island stuck out in no place, because you got the Crick to the south of us, you got, we're almost out to the city limits. We've got really no boundaries. Like I say, I've grown up in Oakland all my life. We had the two grade schools, the Oakland Grade School and State Street, which I went to State Street, and we was all one. I run around with kids that lived down and went to, which is now Lundgren Grade School after they changed it from Oakland Grade School, but I was just wondering how they determine the districts, and what about rentals? They talk about the people that, that, there's so many people that's going to be, what do you want to say?
Transient.
Huh?
Transient or temporary?
Well, temporary, yeah, rentals. I mean, the people come and go. We've got houses that are empty, that's nobody living in it. They go and check to see if anybody lives in that house. On my block alone, in the 500 block of Northeast Arter, there's 14 homes. Approximately 20% of them are empty. 518 Arter, 527 Arter, and 545 Arter. So that, like I say, there's, there's 14 homes there. That's almost 20%. In the 400 block, there's 12 homes. 25% of those homes are empty. 403 Arter, 437, and 446. And I just wondered how many of the Oakland residents actually vote in the elections? They talk about the people voting and everything, and why they vote, why we vote at Chase Middle School if we're in the East Topeka District. That was another thing. One more item. How many homes in Oakland are owned and lived by property owners? How many of the names, how many of the homes are rentals? So there, you've got the people that are in and out, in and out. There's no justification, as far as I'm concerned, as to setting it up by the number of residents in that area. Like I say, I've lived in Oakland all my life, going on 78 years, so I'd appreciate it if you'd put us back where we was, what, five, 10 years ago?
10 years ago.
In District 2, like Tom said, what was that, number eight? I hadn't had a chance to look at the maps, but put us back where we actually belong.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Jessup?
Well, this is just a general question. The garden park area that you're talking about, do you know which precinct?
Which precinct?
Yes.
I think he has a better chance of going on streets.
Yeah, streets, what are the...
What are the boundaries?
Maybe Tom can do, yeah. What are the, what are...
It's precincts.
How do you define garden parks?
Anything?
Mr. Jessup?
Yes.
Can you go back behind the podium so they can record it?
Okay. The Shunga Crick runs around, the airport's on the east side, that's Straight Street. There's, there's four blocks in there.
Okay.
The, it's a horseshoe where the old Shunga used to run around, and so you're, you've only got two blocks in there. The 400 and the 500 block of Arter, Oakland, Kellam, Winfield. So there's four blocks in there, and so there's like eight blocks.
Okay.
But it's in that little section there, along with, like I say, over on Forest Street, they divided that and put them in the same district with us over in the East Topeka. The people on the west side of the street are in District 2. Now, what kind of common sense is that? And like I say, more and more people in the Oakland area are rental houses, so they got transit. You talk about the residents, you know, voting, how many of them people actually vote? You can see there are just two of us here tonight from the Oakland area, and like I say, I've lived in Oakland all my life, and I just don't understand it.
Thank you, Mr. Jessup.
Do you have any questions? I'm sorry.
No, no.
I'm not a speaker, so...
You did great, but, no, but we're very grateful you came.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks for giving us part of your day to do this.
So I'm trying to guess which precinct, because we're, that's the information that we have to go by. Would you say there are probably 668 people that live in the garden park area, in an eight-block area? That seems a little dense, but...
I wouldn't have any idea.
Okay.
Because, like I say, in my block alone, in the 500 block, there's 14 homes, and three of them are empty. One, all three are vacant, and then 400 block, because like I say, it just takes in two blocks, and there's one that's questionable, I don't know whether it's vacant, I don't see nobody. The next house, 437's for sale, and 446 is vacant, and it's a rental. So, and the people, it was a single lady, and she just moved out on the west side of town, so, but most of my neighbors I know, and we get along great, so...
Good for you.
I wish they'd put us back in the District 2 instead of sticking us on an island. Thank you.
Commissioner, Arnett, I just want a point of clarification. The specific precinct they're talking about is 2 Ward 4. If you look at the current population map, it is that swath of sewer that is not in the same area as the rest of Oakland.
Okay.
So the garden park area is a portion of that Ward...
A portion of that.
2, yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions for Mr. Jessup?
Madam Chair, my question is, I don't think it's 2, Mr. Jessup, but he, he bursts a question for me.
Okay.
And that is, with the redistricting, whichever plan we adopt, will that change his current polling location?
If we go with Plan A, it will. It would move hit, move from District 3 to District 2.
You were talking about polling locations.
I meant his voting, voting location, his, right now.
We don't have anything to do with polling location, where you go on Election Day.
Right.
So...
Currently, he mentioned it's Chase Middle School.
Yeah, that's where we get the vote.
That's, that...
Well, not, not exactly Chase, it's State Street. Chase, they, they put them together by putting a gymnasium between the two schools. The middle school is Chase, State Street is still State Street, but they tied them together.
But no, we don't have any control over that. It's up to the Election Commissioner's Office.
Who's on his ballot would change?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who else would like to speak? Come on up.
Thank you for providing the Neighborhood Improvement Associations, as well as the Citizen Advisory Council, opportunity to provide feedback. I'm Susan McClarity, and I am the Chair of both of those organizations, or Valley Park Neighborhood Improvement Association, as well as the Chair of the Citizen Advisory Council. The current redistricting process does not clearly identify the problem to be addressed. If you can't identify the problem, you aren't going to solve it. Having a goal to achieve approximately 14,164 people in the district does not seem to be consistent with the data needed to get the desired outcomes, based on my understanding of the concerns Commissioners raised and discussion, and discussed about the migration from the city inner core to areas outside of the current city boundaries and the deterioration of the inner core. Urban sprawl is being done at the detriment of the city's inner core and NIAs. It doesn't make sense to annex new developments when the utility, when the utility infrastructure is not being proactively replaced, and the American Disabilities Act infrastructure has not been completed after 30 years of its existence. Topeka's population is not growing at an exponential rate. There's plenty of housing in Topeka. People just aren't interested in living in substandard housing. And about, an amount of $33,000 is not adequate to bring poor-conditioned housing stock to a new, up to a new construction standard. Window air conditionings are, window air conditioners are installed for comfort, but not for the purposes of bringing a home to a certain structural standard. The more transient populations going through a neighborhood, the more there is a need for garage and shed structures to protect their assets. HUD isn't going to pay for garages and sheds. There is, there are disproportionate dollars amounts and/or disparities in frequencies to the tax breaks between developers and the homeowners rehabbing their homes or that need to be rehabbing their homes. Going back to the data to support the process currently being used, the benefit for redistricting commission, for the redistricting commission is using, is using precinct counts that include minors living in precincts has not been explained. Over time, districts are losing people because of the neighborhood population aging. The scenario is, a scenario is a household that 20 years ago had two adults and four minors, today has one or two middle-aged people, or, or perhaps maybe senior, senior citizens living in it. The former minor, the former minors left town for educational and, left town for educational and employment opportunities outside of Topeka and aren't choosing to return to their former neighborhoods. Over time...
Mr. Clatchey, do you have much more to go?
I do.
Oh, there's still one more minute, okay.
Go ahead. Over time, we lose our, our neighborhood schools in the inner core. That did happen in Valley Park recently. There is, there is a wide range of variances in, in the count size of the precincts. It is, it isn't explained how these variances are beneficial to the redistricting process. There are a vast difference, there are vast differences between the number of households that reside in a Neighborhood Improvement Association. If a NIA can have more than one district, or council district that overlaps its boundaries, then why can't a council district boundary split a precinct boundary? The current process, the current process at this day, at this point, is not using processes and tools to support urban revitalization.
I'm going to extend.
Okay. There is, there is a strong need to relate, to relate demographic information to other things, such as safe housing occupancy. Value, value of the home, the frequency rates with major, with major locations, such as, such as increments of, by 10-year age ranges. Redistricting needs, needs to include hypothesis testing after decisions are made to determine the right decisions were made to address the goals that were agreed upon that should have happened in order to achieve the main goal of the redistricting process. With regard to map A, Valley Park, one of the two precincts are being shifted to another district. The benefits, having more than one's council person, is that there is a greater possibility of having more interactions with representatives at our NIA meetings events, and more, and more eyes to oversee, see click fix tickets, getting addressed in a timely manner. The possibility that more NIA residents will be asked to participate in working groups that support the council. However, greater possibility does not equate to outcomes unless measurements are tied to those, the goals that are trying to be reached. And then lastly, the last thing I want to bring up is that I do have concerns with the scheduling of the public comment period and the manner in which that's done, and here's why. Today, for example, is the day before the deadlines for the, for the NIAs to submit application to their HUD-funded projects, so we're pretty busy doing that. The lack of thought about the date did not, it was, did not reach, oh, the lack of thought put in selecting the public comment date and the, and Commissioner, who did not choose to reach out directly to the NIAs in the district, has an appearance of being a request for the purpose of only checking a guest box that a request was made. The public comment period being only 14 days, basically from the time you guys had your first meeting, that doesn't allow us to have, to send out mailers. We need to send out mailers to get to every household. If we, if we do emails and stuff, we don't get the, we do not get full coverage. There was a comment made in your, in your discussions that you had on your first, one or two meetings, that people could just go out on the website and look for the information. Well, news flash, not all NIAs residents have access to internet and, or even the wherewithal to find the information, so therefore...
Susan, I have to stop you there.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Susan?
Yes, I, I do. Can you talk a little bit more about the impact of Plan A, which would move Precinct 91 from District 6 to District 3?
All, all, I mean, I just did, you know, a SWOT, and the only thing I, I mean, the only benefit I could see is that perhaps maybe we have more people looking at something, but that, again, does not equate to it's actually going to happen and we're actually going to get better results. Currently, right now, we do not have a lot of interaction with our current council rep. So, and, you know, just by merely having another person does not equate that that's going to happen either, unless there's measurements being made for that to happen.
Right, right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to address a couple of things you brought up. One of them being, this is all of what we're doing is already prescribed. We don't have any control to change it. This is already set policy, and it's based on the 2020 census. We don't have any control over that. We just are here to work on this based on the numbers. If you want to go further into it, you will have to talk to city council. So that would be your next step, to do something more about it. So that would be your next step, to do something more about it. Unfortunately, the next time they redistrict is not until 2032, so 10 years from now. The other thing she said... Oh, God. Hate senior moments.
I had the same issues as I was trying to work on this stuff.
Madam Chair, possibly the checking of the box comment, is that what you were trying to recall?
Could be.
That's the one I was interested in.
Go ahead if you have any comments.
Thank you again for your commentary, but I know for a fact that we designated someone to communicate these public comments and this opportunity to have public hearing. I think the Commissioner here saw to it that we got the word out the best that we could. So did you want to speak to that or no?
I guess I just want to clarify with what the concern was is that you only heard from me as in District 2, someone not necessarily even in your district rather than otherwise?
And I also, you know, not only you, but I also heard from community engagement. It's not the fact that we didn't get it, but from the standpoint of we're asked to get opinions and represent the people that elect us into these positions, I have no way of quickly gathering this information and getting a better consensus of people's opinions and stuff based on the timeframe that you gave me to provide the feedback. Because, again, any mailers that we send out take at least three weeks. We have to plan at least three weeks out for it to even get to the residents. And then it's going to be time for them to have to think about it and stuff like that. So that's how I feel. It just feels like there's not enough time based on the demographics that we serve.
At this point, we have one more meeting set up, and it's September 1st. First. That's our next meeting, and that's when we'll be discussing the maps and what we are looking at doing. So if you have anyone that you know that still wants to make a comment, they can still write the City Clerk's Office, and it will be forwarded to us. So there is still a chance to get messages to us to let us know.
Well, I did send, like I said, I did send out messages. I sent out an email for my distribution stuff. But just because I did from one NIA, I mean, mine's fairly robust. Other NIAs do not necessarily have a robust email distribution list. So... And some NIAs aren't even meeting. Like, I couldn't bring it to the meeting because we're not meeting in that 14-day window. So there's not opportunities for me to bring it to a meeting. So like I said, it's just a little bit more difficult to get the information out. I did the best I could too, but doing the best I could and doing it better would be appreciated.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
I actually did have one question. It was about people being able to write in. I was going to ask that. So they have, like, there's not a stopping point for this. It goes until the first...
At least.
Okay, thank you.
And then after that, they will have an opportunity to comment to City Council members. After we have made our recommendation, then it goes to City Council. And at that point, they have a chance to contact their City Council person or go to the meeting. I don't know if they'll have a public hearing, but there will be public comments that they can speak in. So it's far from over.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay. Then go ahead and let's hear... Mary, if you'd like to speak, go ahead.
Are you talking to me? I'm sorry, Mary Torrance? Yes, okay. I'm Mary Torrance. I represent the League of Women Voters of Topeka Shawnee County. The League promotes effective citizen participation at all levels of government by encouraging registration and voting and providing unbiased, nonpartisan information about elections, the voting process, and issues. The foundation of our representative government is the ability of all citizens to have an equal, effective voice in electing their representatives. To achieve this, the City Council and other governmental entities must be nearly equal. The districts must be nearly equal in population. I know you've heard of the one-person-one-vote principle, but there is also another important factor in making representative government work for all citizens is to draw district boundaries to encompass groups of citizens that have common interests and concerns. Encompassing the NIAs in a district is one way of providing that. This enables those groups to elect governmental representatives to speak for them. If the groups are fragmented, they run the risk that no one will effectively represent them. For this reason, the League believes groups of residents working together to improve and maintain the quality of life in their neighborhoods, such as Neighborhood Improvement Association, should be given an opportunity to be heard on this important issue and comment on redistricting plans. Before sending a plan to the City Council, the League urges you to create a district plan based on tonight's input, then solicit comments on that plan to ascertain whether residents' needs regarding representatives are met, and then at that point, submit it to City Council. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mary? Seeing none, thank you, Mary.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else would like to make a public comment? Okay. Come on up, Mr. Jessup.
Again, my name is Kenneth Jessup. I'd like to see a show of hands that how many people know of the Oakland area? How many people know of Garden Park area?
Not by definition.
So you've never seen that area?
No. I've never had it identified as Garden Park.
Yeah, okay. Well, like I say, we're an island because we're surrounded by a crick and really all four sides. So we'd like to be in District 2.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing for tonight. I'm not quite sure where I want to go next. I know we have a lot to digest on these. I know there's a couple other, or at least one other option that will be brought up. I want everyone to be open to having more communications from the city, or the members of the city. I'm not saying that right. The citizens. And if you have a chance to reach out to people you know and ask them how they feel about what this looks like, if they've got a suggestion for something that they would like to have changed. Because when we come back on September 1st, we're going to start talking about and working our way towards a plan to submit to City Council. So that's not that far away. Does anyone have anything else they want us to... The Commissioners, is there anything you want to look at? Tom to research?
Chairwoman, I do want to voice a concern that I have because I do have an amendment to a map that I want to do. My concern is if we wait until September 1st for me to give that amendment, that we won't be giving people enough time to digest that and to give us, because we're going to have two weeks now till the next one, right? Yeah, yeah. So I would just, I don't know if I need to make a motion to put my amendment out there into the world for people to make comment on, or I don't know.
Mary, go ahead.
Have you spoken with Tom, and has he created a map that represents... Well, could we just call that Map D?
You could call it a whole nother map if you'd like, but it is a very minute change to one of the maps. So I mean, I don't care necessarily. I guess whatever's easier.
Tom, does that make sense to create a new map and call it Map D with...
Yeah, because technically it's another scenario.
Jessica's changed. Okay, could we just create this map and then put it on the website for consideration and then discuss it at September 1st? Is that possible?
Absolutely.
Chair, how do you feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
We create the map, we put it on the website, people would have a couple of weeks to look at it?
Okay. Well, if anything, I'm directing Tom to create Map D and disseminate it to the Commissioners as soon as you have that.
Okay.
That was my follow-up question, if it would be sent directly to us once it is ready to go.
It will be put on the website too for other...
Sure, sure.
Anyone to look at.
Sure.
Okay. Vicki, you have a question?
Well, this kind of speaks to an overall process as we approach September 1st. Because whatever that process is, I am taking away tonight proposed amendments to all three maps right now. So is that not correct? I mean, are we just, are we... What are we going to do on September 1st? How are we going to start this? You know, I mean, I would propose that we take it, one map and one district at a time, and introduce amendments, and through consensus, draw a map. Which is not to say that you shouldn't introduce the map, so... I'd like to hear from others about the process that you think might work for the first.
Does John? Go ahead, John.
Okay, I mean, when we look at Plan A of the current plan and the changes that they have there, and then then we have, as Commissioner just spoke, how this process will work. I mean, you have four maps, or three, A, B, C, and...
I think John froze up.
One of the Commissioners had that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And then one of the Commissioners has a proposed map that has a vast dramatic change.
John, you're coming through kind of weak.
Down here in Wichita, their internet service is terrible.
Yeah, it sounded kind of wrong, John.
I'll let them know that tomorrow when I... Plan to just address each one, and then we make proposed amendments. We vote on them up or down. We move on to the next map and do the same thing until we can come to a consensus of... Or we can say we cut from 23... Did I... Okay. Did I cut out?
You've been cutting out. We turned off your videos and just went to audio, hoping...
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. So there's 23 different responses. And we didn't hear from a lot, and I had touched base with Darrell Stewart, who represents one of the NIAs, and he liked, of course, he liked Map A as well. And I wish he would have kind of let the city know, but he let me know that he liked. And we talked, he liked Map A as well. And he'll send in his answers, his recommendation to about Map A. But we, you know, we... There's still some work to do that I plan to do and sit with, talk with other residents in District 4 on some proposed changes before September 1st. And then we'll have some, possibly some more people send in some recommendations from that. But I don't want to make this too complicated for everybody. And that's what I think would be best, is that we don't and create a lot of confusion for everyone. So that's where I'll stop.
Okay. Teresa, did you have something you wanted to say?
Actually, I thought I did, but actually I don't, so I'm good right now. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Jessica.
I do just have a lot of concern with seeing a map for the first time on September 1st. So please make whatever changes. I just feel like giving the... That's why I said something, because I just don't like the idea of us saying we have an amendment to this map, and then we're showing it right then, and we have to sit there and digest it in the moment when we're thinking of all these things. So I just, I don't want that to happen.
That's fine.
I agree with Jessica.
Okay, Jeff?
Well, I just want to thank everyone here in the room for coming to speak this afternoon and this evening. We really appreciate you all doing this and taking time out of your schedule and those who are watching online. I feel like we've had good public input, so I'm very pleased about that. So thank you. And I hope you recognize that we're volunteers too. And so there's other things that we could be doing, but we were asked to serve, and everyone in this room are good people who want to make good policy decisions. So I hope you recognize that as well. For me, you know, I've been looking at the maps and talking to people. I don't think we need to do major surgery on the council maps. I think it's just a few nips and tucks. And I'm a simple person, and I would like to keep it simple. And so right now, I'm leaning towards Map A. And I think there's been some very good input from the folks in the room, and so I may have some nips and tucks to Plan A. But I do want to hear what you all have to say, and I'll be bringing forth maybe a few little edits on A, but I strongly favor A and maybe B. So that's kind of where I'm at. But I do want to hear what you all have as well, and I just think this shouldn't be too dramatic. It's just math. We should be able to redistrict these with minimal disruption, so that's what I'm hoping. And I'm willing to vote on the first on maps, just because I plan on spending more time looking at it. But if we want to meet again after September 1st in a week or two, that's fine too. So I'm committed to this process. So if we want to go ahead and do some debates and edits and call a break for a week or two, that's fine.
I'm going to ask all of you if you have any changes or a different map that you want to present. Let's get it to Tom ASAP, and then we can get it out to us and on the website so we can have the two weeks to figure out where it is that we're falling with any of this. Laura?
I just had a question. Are we still playing, like, informational communications on our city channel and all of that, still trying to get public input? Is that something we can continue to do throughout the rest of this process? Because, again, I think a lot of people were kind of on the, you know, understanding public hearing, and then that's it. We're going to, you know, figure it out from there. So kind of letting people know that they can continue to... Okay, perfect. Thank you.
A point of clarification. When you say proposed changes to any or all of the maps or as they're introduced... I do have changes based on tonight, maybe more than one. So how would I get those to anybody? how would I get those to anybody, and would it be a new map?
Mary, what's the best way to handle that?
Yeah, I think every change has got to be a separate map, so we've got, right now we've got A, B, C, D, or A, B, C, we'll have D, so if anyone else has a change, that's going to be Map E, so that we can keep them straight.
Okay.
Okay, and so, get the changes to Tom, and he will create the map so that we can all take a look at it, well, hopefully it'll be placed on the website, so everybody can look at it, the public, you all can look at it, so by the time September 1st comes, we've got nine maps to look at, and then hopefully we can just vote, select a map on that date, if, if possible.
And Mary, could you do a quick reminder about the Open Meetings Act for us, too, so we don't have any serial communications by email or anything like that?
Right, just do what you've been doing, you communicate with Tom, just like Vicky communicates with Tom, can copy the chair, but don't reply all to emails, don't have any kind of email communication among all of you, so that you're talking about different maps, because that will run afoul of the Open Meetings Act, so don't reply all, just respond, communicate with Tom, maybe copy the chair.
I'm curious, if Jessica wants to, if we get Map D done, and she wants to explain her reasoning behind it, can she do that and send it through one of us to everyone?
It's done, to be honest, and I would be prepared to speak to it right now if, if you would want, just for one less thing to do on September 1st. Is that okay?
That's fine with me.
Would you be able to pull it up at all, Tom, just to show on a big screen what cha, the changes?
Yeah.
So what I did on Plan B, it stays, wait, I don't mean B, I'm sorry, A, A. On Plan A, everything would stay the same except six, as we all know, High Crest right now is split into three different districts, it's split into three, five, and four. My proposal is to move precinct 6-1, which is in three, to, to, to four, District 4, and, which would then only make High Crest in two districts, I would love it to be in one, but it's like literally not possible, but this is at least an improvement, and then we move precinct 4A into District 3.
Wait, precinct four, you mean Ward 4?
I mean, I mean, 4-8.
Ward 4, precinct 8?
Yes.
Okay.
Into District 3.
From, I'm sorry, from four to where?
Three.
From four to three, okay.
My two motivations for this is I really want to get High Crest into at least not three districts, it seems pretty crazy to me, and it really hurts the black community vote. When you also move 4-8 into three, that also is going to increase the vote for the black community in District 3, because that's also a Highland Park, Highland Park NIA is split up a lot, and so those are my motivations for, for that move, and then, of course, everything else still works out on the map, because that was a pretty even switch, so it's all in the variances.
So that gives a plus 52 to District 3.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
You'll remember that I had proposed that 9-1 stay in District 6. Instead of moving...
I'm trying to find it.
It's that little square.
Oh, okay.
I, and I guess the point that I might add is that that precinct is so small that I believe it's fair game for the election office to redraw the precinct boundaries, and I would think, since they're in the same voting area, that it would go to 9-12 if that happens, because even that is below the average precinct, so that's just speculation on my part, but I would propose that Map A, if that's what we're talking about, amending, that it stay in District 6, so that would add another 211 to District 6.
Okay. I'm going to go back to Jessica first, did you have any, those were the only changes you had?
Yes, it is, yep.
Okay, it was just those two precincts moving, basically switching?
Yeah, I had done my math a little bit wrong, so I actually had to do the math a lot on six, and just making that small move of, of putting that little, the nine, or, are you saying that 9-1, 9-1 wouldn't be in, because it moves into your district?
No, it's currently in the district. 9-1 is currently in District 6.
And Map A is moving it into District 3.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, gosh, the things, give me.
Okay, so is that your amendment you want to make to?
If we're talking about Map A.
Map A.
I do want to look at the, I mean, the written comments included other districts that we really haven't heard from tonight, and so I really would like to review the maps, taken as one, and see if there are additional amendments based on that written public comment that we've received.
Okay, I have for the most part, I was keeping track of the comments, we had, I believe it was 23 emails that were sent, and out of the 23, only one, didn't, 22 out of 23 were endorsing Map A, by far, the majority were Oakland residents.
Correct.
A couple of them did not say what, where they lived, so that's all endorsements for the most part for Map A. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, I like your ideas on A, but there was some pretty compelling testimony tonight about precinct 2-4, and so I'm wondering, Jessica and Laura, have you talked about this gentleman's comments about 2-4, Garden Plain being an island? Do you think?
Plan A, yeah.
Plan A would take care of it.
That's why, yeah, I like B, I love, or, I love, hey, I keep saying B, I love A for the reason, because I'm, yeah, big proponent of, of keeping Oakland together, yeah, for sure.
Well, I'm liking your ideas.
So at that point, Garden Plain, is, if we go with Map A, we're doing what they're asking for.
I would point out that all three maps do exactly what they request.
No.
B does not.
No, B does not. And, I don't know.
My understanding is that the input was that C goes a little too far into East Topeka, not defined as Oakland.
Yeah.
So that... Okay, so we have those possible amendments to Map A, are there any other possible amendments we're wanting to look at, and have Tom draw up for us at this point? You're going to have a couple of weeks if you have any other ones, but those are the ones we know about at the moment. Go ahead, Marcus.
Madam Chair, I just want to follow up on Jessica's commentary, which was excellent. My question, Jessica, would be, when you say the unification of High Crest is impossible, what, what, when you did your, when you looked at it, what makes it impossible?
Unfortunately, the precinct sizes of everything that surrounds it, so it's, because you, there's no, the exact precincts of High Crest are 6-1, half of 6, thank you, Laura, half of 6-2, and then it goes all the way to 5-6, 5-4, so the only thing you could do really to get them all together is to, it would mess up the variances way too much. I tried really hard, but...
No, you're fine, can I do a follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Sure.
My follow-up question is, in a, in a, in a perfect world, or in, in your ideal thinking, right now, High Crest is divided into three districts, where would it, which district, and if we could unify, which district number would it be in?
Well, putting 6-1 into four puts the majority of it into four, so it seems like the most logical thing would, to do would be to, you would have to put 6-2 also into four, you'd have to shift 5-4 and 5-6 all the way to five. And, yeah, it just, math doesn't work. You would, to, to, to put High Crest together, to be completely honest with you, you would need to change precinct sizes, which the election office has to do, so.
Yeah, we don't have any control over that.
Yeah.
But at this point, it moves it from three districts to two, so that, we're hoping that helps.
And that, so, go ahead, John.
Yes, it, it does, it, it, I like her position of what she's designed here, and, and it's, it's, gives, you know, some changes, so my goal is to, in, enlist it more, hopefully we'll have more comments and emails from, from the area affected, responses, and so I, Jessica did some, did some homework, and...
I'm with John, I'm with John, I think we're all certainly appreciative of it, just clarity again, so which district got eliminated in the, in the amendment?
District 3.
Got it, so now High Crest is 4 and 5?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just so everybody knows, say again, High Crest is in 6-1.
It's the bottom half of 6, actually where that little hook thing happens at 6-1, that's literally where the line of High Crest starts, and it, and it goes right down the middle where like Kansas is, and then it cuts over to, to the bottom of 5-6. Oh, you have the NIA map, you're, you have like, really, the good one.
So it's in 6-1, part of 6-2, 5-6, 5-4, and 5-3?
I think it even dips into 5-7 a little bit, I think it dips into 5-7, yep, it dips into 5-7 even a little bit.
So Jessica's proposal is going to be D?
Yes.
And that's going to be basically the High Crest amendment to A? Perfect.
Everything about A will stay the same.
Everything else will stay the same on A.
That's all we need to know.
That's kind of why I wanted to say.
So, Vicky, just so I understand, how do you want me to make the proposal to keep 9-1 in District 6?
I think we'd have to do a Map E, and so we could see the numbers and how they total up.
Yeah, I think so, to keep all of these changes straight.
All right, shock and awe, too, is...
Map F.
Okay, Map E.
So Map E.
Or Map E.
Double letters, we're in trouble. Okay, are there any other areas of contention that we want to look at?
Not tonight.
Jeff? I would just point out, representing District 7, you know, we had the, the nice individual from the planning department here last time, and, and I was very curious about the growth, and there's a lot of building permits out in District 7, and there's going to continue to be population growth in 7, so I'm looking down at the deviation on 7, and, you know, if you're all looking to, to do some edits or maps, you know, feel welcome to move towards the east side, in my view, to the east side of my district, District 7, because I think there's going to be tremendous growth there, and we don't want to have too much of a, of a difference, and want it to be fair for everybody.
Yeah, unfortunately.
So if you're, if you're looking at that, I would not oppose, you know, losing a little bit of population on the east side.
They're all big.
Yeah, they're all pretty big.
But that's a problem.
Yeah, so unless at some point it could be split up, I don't see that happening, and if you were listening to City Council Tuesday night, there's another housing district that is going in that will be to the side of Prairie Fire, at like 29th and Croco, so we've got growth going to the southeast also.
Okay, did not know that.
Yeah, so growth is all around, it's just, we have to deal with what numbers we have now.
And I, I would also encourage, and it is exciting, and, and I, I will be honest, I hope that the growth happens in your districts, unlike, you know, the planned growth for District 2 that has stagnated, so, again, it's something to just keep in perspective. I've brought up, we have literally a subdivision that has curbs, gutters, and a nice cul-de-sac, and there are no houses, so just because, you know, there are things planned or in the works doesn't mean it's a, it's a guarantee, and, you know, a lot can happen over the next 10 years, so just, again, keep, keep that in perspective, too, but I do appreciate the willingness for districts to work together to come up with some solutions, so.
This, this is just all about compromise, and we just, we just need to find a map that we can all agree on, and what's in the best interest of the, of the city, so.
Well, and I, I really appreciate the discussion about, the discussion which creates the opportunity to talk about dealing with that growth into the future, because the population is shifting to the west, it's not going to stop, it'll only continue between now and 2033, 2032.
Unless, unless, unless the city, unless the city annexes to the west, and that's another issue, that's another battle with the county, so just to let everybody know.
District 6 may extend all the way to Wanamaker then.
Then I'd be in your district.
Okay, okay, any other comments or anything else we'd like to discuss tonight?
It's a great meeting, thank you.
I would just, I, I appreciate the, the public comment and all the emails coming in, and I appreciate the Capital Journal being here, thank you, Mr. Renshaw, and the fact that the public can continue to still send emails, feedback, to the city clerk's email still exists, so perhaps Tim would consider putting that in the, in the article that he's writing, that, that we can still receive that input via email. Thank you, Tim.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then I'm looking for a motion.
I motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
As opposed? We are adjourned.
Oh, I want to stay and draw a map.